Well, welcome back, everybody. We'll go ahead and move into our relatively quick noon agenda. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
If you've got minutes from May fourteenth.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. Clerk?
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
That's you.
Oh, yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, you probably shouldn't leave another week. I think we just forgot how to do a meeting.
Uh, now we've got the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion, second discussion. Clerk?
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
We'll move on to special business with the reappointment of Sherri Baber to the Parks and Rec Commission for a three-year term ending September two thousand and seventeen. Welcome, I see that you're here. We will, um, I'll put this before council and then you're welcome to come up and say a few things if you'd like.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Sherri Baber to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term ending September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Without objection. That's it, you're official again. Thank you so much for the service you've already provided this, um, the Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks and Rec Department and city, and so glad that you wanted to do this again. You bring a wealth of knowledge, passion and commitment to Boiseans to it. So, thank you, Sherri. Come on up if you'd like to say some things.
Real quick, you know, I always gotta work. Um, I just love Boise. I love this city. I love the opportunity to serve. And I know it was just a little, brief little second, but, um, that's for my mom. Those of you who know me and know my mom, she just turned ninety-three. And I had so much compassion for you when you brought your grandfather. Um, it means a lot to that generation to see us serving. And so this is just an opportunity for Omar to take a video because my mom had a doctor's appointment today and she was so sad she couldn't come. So, thank you for the opportunity. So now she has a video and she'll just be proud as a peach. Thank you.
Thank you, great, great to see you. Yes.
Um, when I first started on council, one of my first liaison assignments was Parks and Rec and Sherri's been there for almost the entire time. So it's been fun to, uh, grow in my liaison role and watch you grow, um, in that role as well. I think it's so important, um, that when, with our Parks and Rec, that we have people who understand all the different ways that we use our parks and our facilities. And one of the things that I really appreciate about Sherri is that as an event planner and as a community organizer, um, the way that you look at parks is very, very unique and it's not always something that's represented, uh, on our commissions. And so from an event planner's perspective, I think it's so incredibly valuable to have you there. It's been so fun to serve alongside of you and it's kind of cool to look back over the last several years and be able to point to some of the different projects that you've been a part of, um, that I've been able to be a part of on council. So I thank you for your continued service.
Madam Mayor. I'd, I'd also like to thank you, Sherri, and also just recognize that not only are you signing on to another term on the commission, but you're also taking up the role as commission president and really appreciate that time that you're, you're dedicating to be able to move this commission forward. It's a great commission with some amazing people, awesome energy, and that all is seen as we enjoy our parks and all of our recreation facilities every day. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor, one more praise. Sherri, thank you so much. Uh, I'd just like to echo what everyone says. Also happy to have someone from West Boise serving on Boise Parks and Rec and in a leadership role. So thank you for, for volunteering and your time. Congratulations and again, many thanks. Yeah, you too. See ya. Okay. And now we have interim budget changes with Eric. Do we have an executive session? I didn't think so, okay.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have three interim budget changes, uh, uh, for your consideration today. The first item from our Parks and Recreation Department is a four hundred thousand dollar budget neutral appropriation to acquire open space property near the Mesa Reserve in East Boise. This property will serve as a critical connection for trails as well as preserve important space for wildlife and native habitat. The Boise City Open Space and Clean Water Advisory Committee approved the use of four hundred thousand dollars from the Foothills Levy Fund for this purpose on March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll note that the four hundred thousand dollar, uh, appropriation, uh, adjustment associated with this includes the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar purchase price as well as closing costs and due diligence costs. Our second item from the Housing and Community Development Department is for, uh, seven million, five hundred and seven thousand dollars of housing investment funds, uh, for the city's contribution into a supportive housing investment fund. This fund would reduce the need for the city to, to fund supportive services on an annual basis. Available fund balance in the Housing Projects and Special Activities Fund would be the funding source, uh, for this payment. Now, the, I'll note the appropriation needed, uh, for this item is one million, two hundred and seven thousand dollars since six point three million of existing fiscal year twenty-four budget for the housing fund is available for this use. The objective of this funding would be, uh, to provide the initial contribution into the supportive housing investment fund, uh, established and administered by the Idaho, uh, Community Foundation, uh, to provide and sustain essential support services to households exiting homelessness into permanent supportive housing. Uh, units that the city has partnered to create and plans to add in future years. Our third item also from Housing and Community Development is for a thirty-five thousand dollar revenue and expenditure adjustment associated with the management of the Sage Mobile Home Park. This budget nu- neutral change would provide for repair and maintenance work. The Housing Authority manages this property on behalf of the city and remits excess rent to the city per contractual, uh, arrangement at the end of the fiscal year. This change is the budget for fiscal year twenty-four expected excess rent that will be received later this fiscal year and establish an equal expense budget. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions the council might have.
Madam Mayor. Eric, um, could you speak to the available fund balance in the Housing Projects and Special Activities Fund? Do you know what the status of that fund is?
Uh, council member, uh, uh, this, this funding here would, um, along with, uh, previously appropriated funds represent near the end of what was, uh, allocated a couple of years ago. Uh, there was a fairly significant investment made into the housing support, into the housing fund from both the general fund and from ARPA resources. Uh, I don't have the exact number in front of me. We can come back with that number, but, uh, we are approaching the end of that and, uh, therefore we are recommending additional funds as part of the fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, a couple of questions. Hey, thanks, Eric. You're here again. On the, um, the city contribution to the supportive housing investment, um, I'm assuming when it, when it mentions the small, um, fee, that is the seventy-five hundred dollars that's included.
Council member, yeah, that is correct.
Okay. And then I want to make sure that, um, we have a, a good understanding of this. Um, you know, the mayor talked about it in her state of the city. The way I understand this is that this will provide folks an opportunity to have a public-private partnership to help folks become self-reliant as they either move out of homelessness or if they need permanent supportive housing. This would also allow people who want to give, to help in those efforts, another opportunity or choice to contribute to something that's tax deductible in order to, to help them serve the community if they would like to give their money.
Uh, I believe that to be true and council member, I might defer, uh, to Maureen Brewer who's here with us, uh, for any follow-up questions on that.
Yeah, Maureen, why don't you come up? And while you're doing that, um, you were spot on that this is the, so all of the housing that we've discussed is a public-private partnership and that private developers and pri- private managers of housing build and then manage the homes. Um, and the bridge we presented, um, when these, these funds were, um, discussed quite a while ago conceptually with council in doing this because the gap issue is, is the provision of services that ensures that people are successfully housed and can become self-reliant, just as you said. Um, and it's that proven model of you can put them in a house, but if you want them to stay in a house and be able to maintain a house into the future, there's case management around it that's needed. And this is a, a fund that's for that. And then it is housed at the community foundation so that others, um, can invest as well. Um, and we're well over halfway, um, towards my goal of doubling that from contributions already or pledges already. Um, and then have put out a public call to the community. So anybody, you know, I could get on and give twenty-five dollars, a business could get on and give two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So anybody, anybody can, um, support this effort.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, um, just would echo what the mayor said that it, it provides another avenue by which folks can contribute. Um, we often get, Our Path Home often gets questions about how we can help and this is another way by which that can happen and it enables bringing online those permanent supportive housing projects that we're going to begin either construction on this summer or rehabbing early next calendar year.
Madam Mayor, another follow-up. Um, Maureen, thanks again. Uh, you know, we've talked all, a lot about every, everyone has a different story on how they come to become homeless and it's as different as everyone's individual lives. Oh, I know, I always forget how to get close to the mic. Okay, um, everyone has their own story about how they've, how they have ended up homeless. It's as different as each of our own individual life stories. One of the things that I would like you to explain is what kind of supportive services we have for folks so that they can, you know, get more skills so that they can, you know, live their best lives. Can you talk about what those supportive services are and, and what we see as the need in the community when someone is homeless?
Happy to, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts. So Our Path Home offers a broad array of different types of supportive services and it depends in part on which program a family or household or an individual is exiting to as they, as we bridge them out of homelessness into a home of their own. Um, but it ra- it ranges from, um, job search and interview skills and, uh, you know, household budgeting, um, all the way to making sure that they get connected to a PCP, primary care physician and/or, um, behavioral health or substance use, um, cessation classes. So really runs the gamut. Um, at New Path One, for example, we also have clinical staff there on site and it's right across the street from Terry Riley. So they're well-connected to a medical home, um, if you will. And then a lot of help with, uh, what we call ADLs, the Activities of Daily Living for folks that are disabled. And most of the individuals that are housed within a permanent supportive housing setting do have one or more disabilities.
Madam Mayor. I appreciate this coming forward. This has sort of been a discussion that seems like many, many years in the making. I think we explored lots of different areas and on how we could leverage these funds to really achieve some of our city's goals. And one of the things I think that we know is that housing works, getting people into housing works. It saves the city money. It's a more dignified and long-term solution for the people that are there. And we've always had this problem of like, how do we not, how do we recognize that this isn't a set it and forget it solution where you put somebody into a house and then you walk away and all the, you know, potential issues are over. It's like, let's make sure that we have the wraparound services to make sure these people continue to exist and thrive. Um, and so I'm glad that we were able to use these funds, explore more funds from the community because we do need the community to participate to really make these work so that we can bring things like the park apartments online and make sure that there's this services there to kind of keep things going. I do think one thing that will be helpful for council going forward in the future, um, is to make sure that we have, um, some conversations about what that grant reimbursement process might look like going forward in the future. And, and I don't know that we're, um, that I one hundred percent understand what the opportunity will be, you know, years down the road to get reimbursed for some of these expenses, what things we might have to be tracking. So I think that that part of the conversation will be helpful, but these funds, the community matching funds, um, and locking this down, I think would be very helpful or would be great.
Are you, I just want to be clear though, because we won't decide on how, whether or not the funds are reimbursed. It's the, it's the federal treasury that will look at the provision of service and then make that decision.
Yep, and I think that's the process that I'm still, don't know if I completely understand that part of the process. I understand everything leading up into that and that's where I think a little more information.
And Maureen and team just put in for that grant, super exciting opportunity. Um, because if they choose us, then they would be reimbursing for the savings that we demonstrate. And we're, and if we don't get it this time, we'll try, try again like we do every time. But you've got numbers from Boise State you could, I would suggest you share on, in terms of the assessment of how much, um, the community saves in housing individuals or families, however Boise State broke it down.
Right, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton. So as the mayor stated, our team just submitted a CIPRA grant, which it's basically stands for Pay for Success from the treasury. So what we will do is spend the, the funds upfront, spend the supportive services, um, funding upfront. And then Vanessa Frye and her team at the Idaho Policy Institute at Boise State will conduct an evaluation, not unlike, very similar to what she and her team have conducted on New Path one point O. We've now added in the CIPRA application, New Path two point O and the park apartments and done a, an evaluation to say, here's the estimated cost savings that we think this community will see to all levels of government, so federal, state and local. And when we prove that those cost savings have occurred, as we have done with New Path One, the treasury will issue to the city what is called success payments. And then we will use those success payments to replenish the supportive housing investment fund. So what we submitted for was essentially a match. City puts in seven point five million in seed funding to the supportive housing investment fund. And then what we were able to ask of the treasury in this initial application is for seven point five million in success payments because that's the minimum that we believe we will, uh, save in the next handful of years.
And then we can show up to ten million dollars. So if we're, if it's more than we expected, up to ten million dollars, then we can demonstrate that. And then what was it? I can't remember. We talked about this before, but the amount saved that Boise State came up with when they did that first assessment?
Madam Mayor, um, for the first four years at New Path, there's been nearly six point five million dollars in cost savings. So this is just on forty units and we're planning to add nearly two hundred units that will comprise the CIPRA application.
Madam Mayor. Um, I'm very proud, um, to be voting on this today. I just want to say we, we don't have enough revenue to meet all of the needs that our city has when it comes to housing. And so we gotta get real creative with how desperate we are. And turning seven point five million dollars, getting a community match and then see here, um, reimbursement from the feds for additional funding. You turn seven million dollars into twenty million dollars. Um, so this is the type of creative work that we need to address our, our problem. I wish we had more revenue to do more, um, but we're under severe constraints from the state. And I just want to thank you for your leadership on this, Madam Mayor. Felt like the, um, there was probably some unfair criticism over the last year about the city going it alone on some of these things. And, um, I think this is a demonstration that, um, we're, we're in this together with the community and we're gonna go track down those dollars, um, to do right by people that, that we care about and that are members of our community and deserve the dignity of a home and a fresh start. Um, so thank you and I'm, I'm happy to be voting on this today.
Thank you, I just want to say thanks for that. Um, I'm really, really proud of this advancement. It's the first time that we've partnered like this with the community foundation. We're well beyond half, half and soft pledges for a match that I aspire to because I do want to see this turn into more. Um, but I gotta thank our team, um, Maureen and crew, but really Maureen's leadership in the space. And, and Hannah was a part of this as well in thinking about how we could creatively structure something new, partnership with the Housing Authority, partnership with the Community Foundation, the Blue Ribbon Committee that we've announced so far, and I've got quite a few, um, meetings with folks that want to invest um, when I'm back from vacation. And so the community is stepping up, um, in so many ways because of not, not only the vision but the ability to implement that Maureen and team have demonstrated. So thank you to the team.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the interim budget changes presented by staff.
Second. We have a motion, a second further discussion?
Madam Mayor, a couple of things. Um, you know, when we vote on things, we have to take it as the whole and, uh, there's not an opportunity to piece off things. Uh, there's so many good things within this interim budget change. You know, we're, we're going to have that missing piece for the foothills. And I think it was Doug and I that were talking earlier that people move to Boise because of so many reasons. But one of it, one of them is our geography and just how beautiful it is. I believe that if we are going to help people get out of homelessness, you have to give them help to get out of homelessness. Uh, and so I, I support having the opportunity to give people help so that they can figure out what they need to do to, in order to live the life that they want to live. Um, I'm glad that this gives the community an opportunity to do something. We have, we have lots of options for this, but it's one more where if you see someone in need and you don't know how to help, it's a place you can go to invest your own money to make sure that they get help. And I think that is powerful because oftentimes when we see people in need, we want to do things and we don't know how to help. And, um, and we know things like this that are structured, that budgeting, um, you know, how to, how to get a job, all of those things are important skills that we all need. I, I've said before that I have, I have a lot of consternation about the city buying property that already exists and becoming a landlord. I'm not happy about the, you know, the three point two five million dollars that we spent on, on the trailer park and the, and for twenty-six residents. I understand that ship has sailed. Um, we have it now, we have to do right by it. We have to, uh, make sure that we keep it up. But, um, I think there's a lot of good things in this interim budget and I will be voting for it.
Clerk?
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks, Eric, very much. We're done. But we don't adjourn, even though it says adjourn on here, do we? No, I was surprised by the role-taking too. I think we just used stan- standard form. Okay, great. All right, so that, that's it for our regularly scheduled noon meeting and we are back into our budget workshop, uh, with Jessica Dorr with the library.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, Jessica Dorr with the library. Uh, before I begin, I just want to pick up an important thread from this morning. I am wearing a cardigan button, which was part of our Taylor Swift dance party, uh, in December. We had about three hundred, three hundred people come to the Hays Auditorium. Uh, and even if Taylor Swift does not come, uh, to your event, it is a very, very fun time. Uh, and with that, I'd like to thank you all for providing me with the opportunity, uh, to speak with you about the Boise Public Library, what we're accomplishing this year, uh, and what we're building towards next year. The start of fiscal year twenty-four marked the first year of the library's, uh, new strategic plan for impact, which is setting direction for the library for the next five years. This plan was created through extensive community engagement with library users, potential users, stakeholders and partners. This is the first year that I'm presenting, uh, using this strategy to you. And so I'm really excited, uh, to share with you how our current, uh, and planned investments, uh, will help us achieve impact. So our strategy has four key priority areas. Priority one, expanding access, making our collections, programs and services available where, when and how people want them. Um, priority two, increasing our impact, creating valuable experiences for every resident and meet their needs at every stage of life. Uh, priority three, optimizing resources, modernize, strengthening, streamlining our operational capabilities. Uh, priority four, measuring our value. Uh, we are establishing impact and performance metrics and using data for decision-making. And this is important because the community of Boise is continually evolving and this strategy will enable us to continually evolve to meet people's needs. And we are off to a great start for our fiscal year twenty-four investments. First, of course, we are expanding access and as you can see from the first photo on the left, we are open during construction. And here I really want to thank the public, uh, for their patience and their understanding during the work. Uh, sometimes you come into our facilities and they literally have new places blocked off, uh, for construction workers. Sometimes our fire alarm goes off unexpectedly. Uh, sometimes the things that you thought were in one place have been moved to another. But man, the public has really rolled up their sleeves with us. If you've visited any of our branches, you've seen those investments as well. We've got new flooring and furniture and shelving, but nowhere is the investment more noticeable than downtown. We're doing a lot of work to catch up on previously deferred maintenance. We're meeting the standards set forward by the Americans with Disability Act and we're providing a safe welcoming space for everyone. Highlights of the work downtown include a new roof, a repaired parking lot, a new fire pump, which I don't know why that's important, but I imagine there are people here in the audience who are really excited that that got checked off the box. Uh, we've got new restrooms on the first and second floor, including in, uh, our first floor restroom and adult changing table because we really do take seriously having a welcoming, um, and safe environment for everyone. And right now our restrooms on the third and fourth floor are in process and, uh, construction is happening as I speak. Perhaps the most important way we've increased our impact this year is the automated book sorter. So that second photo from the left, uh, that was installed downtown. And this really is a da- a game changer in how we provide services to the public. Prior to installing this sorter downtown, uh, we would have to schedule four people, uh, to process books per hour, uh, when we were open to the public. Now with that book sorter in place, we can, uh, we've got the tool that's automatically moving things around, getting them ready to ship to other libraries or go back on our shelves. And we'll only have one person, uh, behind the desk with that. So there's the obvious benefit that your books are processed faster, you get your next read faster. But the real benefit is that staff time. We've taken staff out of the back and put them on the floor to help people. That means we're providing better services directly to the public. Our staff have had time for more training and they have the skills and now the time for in-depth and longer interactions. This is especially important because we've been able to give, um, tools for our users for a lot of self, um, you know, they can use the library with self-checkouts. So the interactions that they have with our people tend to be more involved. They tend to include technology. The questions that we're answering are about eBooks, e-audiobooks, providing support for apps, providing better resources. So having more staff time to directly engage with the public is really seeing, you know, faster service, but, but also better service. And last year, you know, our five locations served six hundred and forty-three thousand in-person visits. Uh, as of today, we are on track to exceed that by thirteen percent this year. So us constantly thinking about how we're freeing up staff time is really important, uh, for the public. And part of what we're asking staff to do is also to build more partnerships because those are some of the services that enable us to have the impact that the community is asking of us. So the photo that is second from the right is recently taken downtown where we partnered with the Idaho Department of Labor, um, for a job fair. Um, and even though the Department of Labor is downtown and they were really, uh, struck by how many people they weren't reaching, uh, that weren't coming into their downtown office, but who had used the library for job searching, for job resources, uh, to print a free resume. And so we were able to really make that community connection for them. And Boise, of course, is a city of readers. Our collections to be, continue to be used wide, used widely, both in print, indigenous. We're adding more youth materials and more materials and languages other than English. This year, our digital users have increased by thirty-four percent and our digital checkouts have increased by thirty-six percent. Um, we're trying to purchase as wisely as possible. We've been able to double the number of perpetual use titles, um, to ensure that we are purchasing things, not just leasing them, uh, in the digital space whenever possible. Um, and our print collections also are continuing to hold steady. When in some cases we're seeing, uh, some decline, uh, across other libraries. We're not seeing that here in Boise. We're not seeing that here in Boise, so we're planning for that. And finally, I'd be remiss if I did not mention our new library website, launched to the public on April 2nd. This site is our welcome mat. It is the 24/7 library that never closes. I would highlight for all of you, if you get a chance and haven't explored it, to look at our location and events pages, which show at a glance, library programs. So this is something we'd been asked for from the public for a long time. Can you just tell me where all the music and movement are at any location? I will drive around the city. The, our team, our partners in IT and community engagement really just made a phenomenal website for us that helps people find resources faster and those programings that they're looking for.
Jessica, I love the website and, but I hadn't looked at events and I just did. And you're right, it's great.
It's, yeah.
To be able to see it all, all at once.
And Madam Mayor, thank you.
I've been on the website, I just haven't looked at events.
Madam Mayor, that is why I wanted to highlight it. Because the other thing that you can show at a glance is the age group that it is. So the different colored dots are what age group you're looking for. So if you want a storytime for zero to five, you'll be looking for a specific color. It really, you know, like I said, just the, how this helps our users find the resources that they're looking for is, is, is just a remarkable step forward for us. So as we look to fiscal year '25, our investments are again aimed at deepening this impact. We're going to continue to invest downtown to make sure that we're meeting standards of the American with Disabilities Act. Next year, we'll be moving our focus to the first floor and our circulation area. And we'll take advantage of opportunities to improve the experience of our younger users and teens in these investments. Calling, going back to this morning, there were a lot of discussions or questions about reaching teens. We've recently created a special teen space in our downtown location because we really do want to make sure that we're providing as much as possible a welcoming environment that's specifically tailored for the needs of our teens. And as was also mentioned this morning, we're also requesting funding to increase the impact and effectiveness of our busiest branch location. And that is our Kohl &amp; Eustick branch. We are requesting funding for an automated booksorder. Share some of the benefits of that. But also to put in place a new staffing model, which will ensure we're better able to meet the community needs. We are currently working with a pre-COVID staffing model and we have seen so much change in the complexity of the services we provide, the demand for the services we're providing and how we actually can staff our locations. We, as, as you all know, we're also undertaking a long-term facilities plan that will help us set the direction for the library for the next 10 to 20 years. But this staffing model at Kohl &amp; Eustick will help us meet today's need. It's our busiest branch. It has usage rates that continue to go up month after month. It is located in a rapidly changing environment with a demographic that we're seeing increasingly coming into our building with some, you know, real community needs. And it serves a high number of families with children, both in formal and in homeschool settings. So one of the things in the listening session we did with our strategic plan is we heard from the community, both the importance of our physical location, but also a desire for our staff to be more in the community. Kohl &amp; Eustick currently cannot meet the, all the requests that we have for visits from schools, daycares, care facilities, homeschool groups. We're not able to meet the literacy needs of that really important group of kids that are growing up. And this new staffing model will allow us to really meet the people where they are, whether it's, you know, it partners with our parks, whether it's in daycares or whether it's in all the schools that are in the area. And we're going to use this new model to collect data to understand its impact. How is this leading to better outcomes for our readers? And we'll use that to consider how we might replicate that at Bound Crossing or some of our other locations. To start this, actually as part of our summer reading program, we just had our summer reading and learning celebration on Saturday. On Thursday, if you go into any of our locations, you'll be able to sign up and get your first free book. We're going to track our summer reading participants by the school that they'll be attending in the fall so that we can start to see where our targeted outreach is working and also where there might be schools that we're missing that we'll need to make sure that we are building those partnerships with. And finally, we're going to request additional funding for materials for both our print and digital collections this year. This year, with the passage of House Bill 710, that's, we've, that's brought a lot of interest in how the library selects materials and how it lends materials to youth and, and to everyone. And I have personally fielded a lot of questions and a lot of concern from the community if this new legislation will change what the library purchases or how we allow access in our facilities and to our collections. And I want to assure the public, we will continue to provide books, materials and programs for all ages that reflects the vibrant and diverse community that Boise is. This is what the people of Boise expect of the library and we are proud to serve everyone. And for that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, a couple of questions. Thank you, Jessica. I've had the opportunity to attend some of the library board meetings and the dedication that the board has, both in person and online. Couple of questions. Can anybody sign up for summer learning for the free book?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, I am thrilled to tell you that any, we have five different age categories for our summer reading. And I promise anyone who wants to sign up is welcome to. You can track your reading. We are hoping to make reading a fun daily habit. You have the opportunity to earn up to three prize books. And I would be thrilled if you want to meet me at a location on Thursday, we'll get you signed up.
Do I also get a Pizza Hut? Personal pan pizza?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question.
Pizza, personal pan pizza.
Look at reference.
Nope.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, I'm sorry, that is not a prize. Although this year I will say, we're very excited. We're trying something new with our summer reading prizes. We're actually, for the first time, going to have what we call a community prize. And if, this is again, something we're doing in partnership with Parks and Rec, is if that a certain number of people in a, in a, that register say they're signing up for their specific location, if we get in a certain number of readers, we'll actually plant a tree in the local park. So you, no pizza, but you'll have the opportunity to contribute to planting a tree in the park closest to your library.
Jessica, you have just given me hashtag goals for the entire summer. Want to win now. Couple of, couple of questions. First of all, thank you so much. I'm really interested to hear that Kohl &amp; Eustick is the busiest library. I wouldn't have predicted that. And could you explain a little bit more about what the new staffing model is? I know the world's changed because of COVID. What a pre-COVID staffing model looks like and what a 2024 and beyond staffing model looks like.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, yeah, thank you for the question. Yes, we, we looked at the data to see where we are seeing the most growth in usage. As you know, Bound Crossing and Kohl &amp; Eustick are similar in size and they really do have very similar statistics. But Kohl &amp; Eustick is our busiest location outside of downtown. And that is, you know, a 20, 20,000 square foot building. So part of it is just having enough staff to answer service desk questions to staff programs, to make sure that we've got help for computer usage. You know, how do we, you know, if someone's trying to print something, we need to have staff on the floor. But we also want to make sure we're really thinking about staff in the community. So this will add staff in our library role and our library assistant role. So we'll add a librarian and we'll add two and a half FTEs of library assistants. So those are the people who are directly on the floor, working with the public or that are doing some of the partnership. We'll also add a supervisor. Right now, the manager at Kohl &amp; Eustick has 16 direct reports. And as Steve Burgas talked about when he had his public works hat on, that it, we can't add more staff without adding additional layers of supervision. That also will free up time for our branch manager to do more of that partnership development and to be meeting and making more of those connections with local businesses, with local schools, with local nonprofits. And if you're doing the math in your head, you'll realize that my 4.5 is different than the 3.7 that Eric mentioned earlier. To talk about some of the trade-offs that we're making, that also came up this morning. We are repurposing a admin role that we had downtown to actually move that over to public services at Kohl &amp; Eustick because we really are prioritizing the people who engage with the public in their day-to-day interactions.
Madam Mayor, one more. Jessica, I think it was either my first or second meeting, the IBC came through for the mental health professional that was at the downtown library. I know that that's been something that we've been looking at downtown to see what that person does, can it be replicated? Could you give us a little insight as to whether you think that's something that we need system-wide within our libraries?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, we are still looking at that and have, I don't have a recommendation currently. I think one of the things that we're really trying to maximize in that role is the connection and the resource piece. So that if, you know, with one person knowing the fabric and the network of the safety net, we're really thinking more about how do we scale that across all of our staff? Because even, you know, even if we had one at every location, we're open more than 40 hours a week. So we really need to think about how quickly can we get a referral? You know, what resources can we have available? One of the things that our mental health coordinator did was actually create for every single location, a unique book of resources just for that area, right? So if you walk into Hillcrest and you're looking for the, you know, the closest place that you could, you know, the closest food bank, you don't want a, you don't want to go into Hillcrest and get information for Bound Crossing and vice versa. So part of what we're really thinking about is how do we scale the knowledge that that position has? How do we scale the resource connections? And then how do we, in some cases, also just allow people to come in and find resources on their own, even if they never ask us? The, the resource book that we have at each location, we have it close to the door. You can find it, you can look through it. And we're constantly adding new resources and pages because the idea is that people can come in, get the help that they need and, and then walk out. Sometimes without engaging with a staff member, we want to serve them in both ways.
And I'll just say, before Councilmember Corliss, I just happened to be on the mental health coordinator. I'm so impressed with the work she does. And I just happened to be on an all-staff call one time to just say a couple of things myself, but I stayed on because she was talking. And it was very much like, almost like a train-the-trainer setup. So she talked about the books being built, but also the resources she was providing all of our staff to then be able to serve as well, that I was really impressed by. Appreciate that. Councilmember Corliss?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I think it'd be a great idea to maybe have a briefing sometime just from her and the work that's been done, since that's a fairly new role to, out to council. Jessica, I just want to say thanks to you and your entire team. I think we, we all love the library. I mean, I, I think Doug Holloway, he's got a great job. You drive by a park and it's obvious of the magic that's at that park. At the library, you got to open the doors and come in or you're online. And it is truly a magical place that has amazing resources for the community, not just books, but audiobooks, but 3D printers, camping equipment, everything there. I do have just a couple of questions. One, do we still operate a bookmobile?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, we do not.
Okay, okay. I know we're looking for.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. We do have an ExciteTrak, which is our tricycle, which we, it's a three-wheel, has a big loader in the front where we can put books. It has a Wi-Fi hotspot, it has a laptop. So we, it, it is what we use for our community programming. It, you know, one of the things that I hope you'll see more of is the magic of the library outside the building. Look for the big library flag, look for a bunch of kids around a tricycle. We do storytime there. It enables us to go to outreach events and to show up. You can check out books from us. It really is, for us, you know, it's a sustainable way of connecting with the community.
Yeah, I liked, I've seen that bike. That's, that's a pretty neat program. It's pretty novel as well. The other question I have is, I know we're looking at a lot of community outreach and building on our plan. Would it be possible to do like a survey at each desk that's checked out? That's just a QR code that we scan and say, two questions, what do you like? And what would you like to see?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, absolutely. We will be doing specific, you know, what would you like to see at this location? What would you like to see at another location? Lots of great conversation with the community because we really do want to hear from the community so we can make sure we meet their needs.
Madam Mayor, thank you for being here today. As you've heard, we're all big fans of the library. I think that many folks have come to see our library workers as sort of our frontline workers. You have some of the exposure to all of the issues that our community is dealing with on a daily basis. And you see some of those trends, you know, taking place and emerging even before other groups do. And the foresight, bringing on that mental health coordinator, I think is a really good example of that. I think one of the things that people don't know is how much you all use data, how you measure your impact, how strong of policies that you have to make sure that everything that you're doing is working, is relevant and is, you know, by the book. And I can't help but think as some of our libraries are struggling with how they're going to deal with new legislation, even with some of them closing down, that one of the reasons why the library continues to grow and thrive is the strength of that data and the strength of your policies. That's you, that's your staff and that's the board. I'm excited for the booksorder. I hope that you can see it from the public. I don't know if that'll be possible because it's so fun to watch at the main library location. I don't know if Kohl &amp; Eustick will have that. But similar to some of our other departments, you all are so successful in your teen programming. The Boise Comic Arts Festival is one of our best teen events that we have in Boise, all of your different programs. And what I would ask is that you continue to be a frontline worker and you continue to learn the needs of our teens and mental health, that you continue to share those with all of our other departments as well so that we can learn from that success and, and carry it over into some of our other departments. So as you're learning those insights, please, I would request that you, you share those across the board.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, thank you very much for that. I would like to say on the frontline worker comment that you made, we have learned so much from particularly the fire department. They have been very generous with their time, sitting with our managers, helping think about how we are responding to incidents in new ways. So really great partnership there. You'll also hear from Sarah Borden, some of the support that her team provides for my staff with that. I'm sorry to say that at Kohl &amp; Eustick, the sorter will be in the back and it won't have the same window that you see downtown. Although with the work that we have planned for downtown, we're actually going to be removing the circ desk to put in a ADA compliant surf desk, circular, sorry, circulation desk, not surf desk. That'd be fun. We will be moving things away from that window. So you'll, you'll be, you'll need, you'll be able to come downtown and be even closer, is what I'm saying.
Jessica, thank you very much. All right. Well, next up, we've got arts and history, Jennifer Stevens. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good to see you all. It's a great honor to be here today and to be able to be up here with my truly incredible peers and to go after Jessica and, and after Doug, all of us who have a strong connection to each other these days, as well as to the groups that we're trying to serve. So I just wanted to start out with a slide that you actually did see last year. But I, I think it's important again to just remind council and mayor how much the, the work that my department does is all about placemaking and making sure that we do maintain what makes Boise Boise. So I'm not going to spend too much time on this slide other than just as a quick reminder on that as I go into the impact that the investments that you all made in 2024 have had on the city. So on the slide in front of you, you see several pieces of public art that are either in the midst of being installed or will be installed. in the midst of being installed or will be installed this, likely this fiscal year, if not into the early part of next fiscal year. We've been nurturing three key partnerships over the last year or so. One was CCDC, one with our peer, peer departments across the city, including parks, including libraries, including the neighborhood outreach staff and every other department in the city. And then finally, through the Boise State School of the Arts and other Boise State Departments, as part of our workforce development in the, in the cultural and art and history arenas. It's through these partnerships that the art pieces that you see on the screen right now have, have really come to fruition. On the far left, you'll see Passage, which is going to be installed later this year in Redwood Park. And this is a piece of art that really has come to fruition through engagement with the neighborhood outreach staff on the community engagement team, and has been very, involvement with the community and the neighborhood there has been instrumental in determining, A, the artist, and B, what this is going to look like, which essentially reflects what it would have felt like to wander through the Eustick Orchards and the very agricultural past of that neighborhood. The next photo to the right of that is a rendering of the current design for art in the 521 Grove Street space. You guys will be seeing this later this year, but we've been working really closely with CCDC, as well as with the Parks Department, to get to the place that you see there on the screen. And of course, it's a really small picture, but I can assure you that by integrating this art into the design of the park from the very get go, this is going to be a really special and unique space. One block to the east of that space, a new sculpture will be adorning the street side of the water wheel at CW Moore Park. And again, we've been working closely with CCDC, as well as the Parks Department, to make sure that the art that has been designed by artist Bobby Zokides, which is called Clipsydra, try to say that, Clipsydra, which means water clock, can be installed in this space. And essentially, what that rendering shows is, it represents a series of ancient vessels that come from different community groups and immigrant groups who settled and lived on this block sometime over the last 150 years. And then also adorning these same blocks, this is the old Boise blocks, Grove Street, right, very, very close to where we're all sitting here today, are the bronze medallions that artist Mungo Legoya is holding in his arms. These are called Crossroads, and these also represent, there are three flowers on two different designs, so six flowers in total, that show the national flower of different immigrant groups again. So essentially, the work that's being done on these blocks and the art that is being placed there pays homage to the various immigrant groups that have come and settled Boise and contributed to our city over the last 150 plus years. This is important work, because again, it demonstrates the, the need and the desire of the city to recognize the contributions that many immigrant groups have played in this community as we continue to create a city for everyone. In addition, last year, the impacts that the city's investments have made have included a new strategic plan that the City Department of Arts and History has worked on. And that has really led to the entire team, we've been fully staffed now for almost a year, and have been steady with that, which has been great and let us do a lot of really important work. We're deeply focused right now in that strategic plan on creating regular and predictable programming for the public and being very intentional about the residents that we're trying to reach, so that we touch a broad swath of Boise residents. We want them to both attend events that contribute, contribute to their quality of life, but we also want them to contribute their ideas and their concepts to various placemaking efforts that we're doing, so that the art that we put on the street and the programs that we do and the history that we tell reflects the community's values and the people who are actually here. I want to just give a quick, quick update on the percent for art ordinance. The percent for art ordinance that was altered last year, just revised to bring that up to modern, modern standards, is, has really allowed us to make some investments in some things that we couldn't have in the past. And that includes buying some display case that allow, I'm sorry, display cases that allow us to take some of our history exhibits that you typically see only on the third floor here, out into the community. So again, with partnership with the libraries, we've been able to take those out into Bound Crossing, the main library, Eustick and Cole, and other places, and hopefully eventually into the Parks facilities as well, so that we can take those exhibits out into the community, and people don't necessarily have to come here. And again, that's part of us trying to meet our residents, where they are, where they congregate, where they're naturally going. So we're really excited about that. In addition to that, we are trying deeply with our strategic plan to reach two populations. And Councilmember Hallie Burton has mentioned it a couple of times today, one of those is our youth. And that's not just the youth, the preschoolers that necessarily would, you know, that might go to the playground, but instead really focus on the teen population and families. And part of the reason that we're doing that is because of the mental health crisis that our teens in this community are experiencing right now. And we feel that our, our program and our department is uniquely positioned to do programming and reach some of these teens upstream where they need that connection. And so we're deeply focused on that, and that's one of the areas that we're really, one of the, the populations that we're aiming to reach with some of the programming that we're doing now. In addition to that, our 55 and better population is also, do you like that? Is also growing. The average age of our population in the city of Boise is growing. And so while our programs tend to reach that population naturally, because people who are retired tend to have more time, we haven't necessarily, in the arts and history department, created programs that are intentionally for that audience. So we are actually working on doing that right now. And then one of the other things, back to the percent for art ordinance, that has resulted from that revision, is that we've allowed, the, taking the maintenance out of the capital spend and putting it into the regular budgeting has allowed us to do a five-year maintenance plan. And that has really streamlined the way that we care for our art and our cultural assets throughout the community. So that, that's been really great. Second, we've really been working to expand our impact through building partnerships across the organization. The Public Works Public Art Coordinator was hired last year as a result of the investment that you made, actually in fiscal year 23. And I'm just going to go back one slide. The sculpture on the far right is actually the very first piece of art that's coming out of that partnership with Public Works. That, that person was approved as part of the enterprise funds budget, again, in fiscal year 23. And what we did is, we worked, our public art coordinator that works for Public Art, or Public Works, it's always a mouthful to say that stuff, Public Works Public Art Coordinator, worked with Boise State School of the Arts to actually go into a classroom, help the professor with the curriculum, so that our emerging artists will know how to respond to public art calls. And so the coyote and her pup on the right will be installed on the linen blocks in one of our art ports, coming up here in the next year and a half or so. In addition to that, last year, the investment that you approved for a public art coordinator at the Boise Airport has been hired, and Savannah has been in place now for about a month, and I'm really excited about the work that's going to be happening there. So we're very happy about the partnership that we've worked on at the airport. Third, we've also focused in fiscal year 24 in increasing access to and understanding of Boise history and really shaping the narrative there. A lot of materials have been digitized from the city archives and added to the catalog for public access, including materials from former Parks Director Gordon Bowen, Bowen, the papers of former Councilmember Corky Onwiler, who was on the council when city council created the Green Belt. And then we've also digitized the city council ledgers from the 1860s. There's additional work going on in the River Street Neighborhood collections, and that's important as well. And then finally, under increasing access and offerings, I want to point out that in about two weeks, we will be kicking off something new called City Steps. This is a series of tours we'll be giving throughout the summer. It's two guided history tours, as well as two public art tours. We have hired two young professionals who are coming from our local universities to do some workforce development with them. So they'll be not only giving tours and getting some experience in interpretation, but also in public outreach and speaking to the public. So we're really excited about this. This is a, this is a program that's going to grow over the next several years. This is our first year, it's a pilot. Thanks very much to Community Engagement for the work that they've done on creating a city mark for this, so you'll begin to see some of the marketing that's going to come with this. We're really excited about this. And I'll be doing a tour among, you know, the Lions Club and Rotaries and that sort of thing. So again, we can drum up some of that downtown business, older population, but we're also doing some tours in the evenings to capture some of our younger people as well. So we're excited about that. I would be remiss not to mention briefly the work and the investments at the cultural sites. I think it's important to recognize that the investments that city council has made in our cultural sites has really led to those sites functioning as community sites. And I think that's a really important thing to understand. The Hayman House, for example, has developed as a place of outreach for our community members. We have worked closely with the Idaho Black Community Alliance at that house, both for community-led panels, as well as for the fine art photography exhibition that's up there right now. That documents the Idaho Black Community Alliance's gala, which was a gala that represented the Middle Passage and had costumes and told that story. And so it's a very important piece of outreach to our community, to our black community. And in July, we'll be rotating in a new history exhibition there that's focused at the Hayman House on life in the River Street Neighborhood from 1940 to 1970, which was when it was primarily a black neighborhood. Our history archives and cultural site teams are working hard on that. I want to get to the fiscal year 25 investment requests. And this really goes, it continues the work that we're doing to sort of try to reshape and complicate the narrative of the story that we tell in Boise. This year, we're really focused on choosing a path that will help us construct that future. And what we're asking for in terms of budget is money for the consolidation of the city records center and the city archives, together with a small amount of professional services budget to assist with our ongoing archival work and the tasks associated with moving. So past best practices around the country are for active records and archives to function together as a unified system. For example, the federal organization is called the National Archives and Records Administration, or NARA. The state of Idaho also operates as archives and records together. The fiscal year 25 budget request will be one of several steps that are intended to get the city of Boise to implement this best practice. And you'll be hearing more about that, it was alluded to earlier as well. Currently, the record center is located separate from the archives. The record center is an underutilized space, and with the help of the facility staff this last year, the city clerk and the city archivist, we determined that that record center space is being underutilized, and that there was enough space there for the archives to move into it. So the budget request will allow us to purchase shelving, which is infrastructure that can be reused at a future location, perhaps the support facility out by the airport, or perhaps someplace else, as well as outfitting the record center facility with the proper tech equipment and security, as well as, and this is really important, opening the front space to and for the public. Archives themselves, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, are a critical part of the lifecycle of a city record, and they have to be figured into the city records management of the city to ensure compliance with state law. The city archives are essentially where records go to live out the end of their lives and become available to the public for research. The disposition and transfer to the archives relieves the public record system of voluminous historical and inactive records that are not being responsive anymore to current public records requests. So having a functioning archive provides the public more transparency and ease of access. For example, a real example, if a student is doing research on the streetcar system from Boise State, we are currently telling them to submit a public records request. The streetcar has not been in existence since the 1920s in this city. So if we, when we make this system functional, and we are currently working on that, there's a whole city effort to do so, we can send that student to the city archives, to the municipal archives, to do research in historical records where they should be doing research and relieve that burden off of our current staff. Another, unless, no less significant benefit of doing this, of course, is the reduction in base budget through the consolidation of these facilities. And of course, there will be a reduction in costs associated with running those right now, two facilities, and making it instead optimize one facility. So with that, I will just say a few other things that aren't on the slides. We also, this next year, are going to be working with Parks and the Depot 100 Celebration, which we're very excited about. You've, you've heard me talk about before, just last week, the cultural and creative industries planning that we're doing. We are also working on a revenue generations plan, so you'll be hearing from us and see in the budget, some fee requests as we move toward piloting some new revenue generation for our department, so that we can increase public programming for the residents that we're trying to reach. And we too, just like library, will be working with IT to implement a new arts and history website this next year, that hopefully will be able to function very much the way that the mayor showed in her on-the-spot demonstration of looking at events across the city. So with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thanks, Jen. I know that this was, you were cut off recently, you were last to go in one of your recent presentations, and we're all so always excited to see you. So thanks for your presentation today. I know that the records, things like creating digital archives of our records is not probably as glamorous as some of the other cultural sites coming online and things like that, but I recognize the importance and really appreciate the effort that's going towards modernizing some of our systems. So thank you for that. That was it, just a comment.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I did forget that you got cut off short, so now you get to make up for some, some extra time here. So when it comes to our archives, whether it's records, or whether it's actually our, our pieces of art that we've got, there's a couple of solutions, and you brought up two of them. One is making them available for the public to see, so we put them in public spaces, and so they're not hidden away. And then the other aspect is that we have a physical location where we put some of these things. I think what I hear you saying is that we're going to combine both of those, our records and our artwork, and our different, you know, pieces of public art that we own, into the same location. Am I understanding that correctly?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hallie Burton, not, not quite. So our archives are essentially, public art is totally, or art is completely separate from this, and the storage for our public art will remain where it is right now, which is actually here in the building. We have a secure location where we store our art currently. The archives are old historic records that are really no longer active. And what we're going to be doing, and what we're asking for funding to do, is to consolidate old historic records with active records. So right now, active records are of course managed by the city clerk, and old historic records are managed by the archives. But that records retention schedule, and when a record sort of dies its active life and moves on to the archives, we're currently working on that. But having those work together in the same facility, so that the records, the current active records staff and the archives staff are working in the same place, is, is going to be, we hope, and I expect it to be true, going to make things much more efficient for the public who is interested in finding records and needs access to certain things.
Thank you. That's great. It's not quite as great as having a long-term solution for where we're going to put our art collections as well. I know that that's something that has to be on our radar as we sort of explore things going forward. And again, what you're talking about, getting some of those collections out into the public is certainly part of that, but is that something that we should also be looking at and anticipating as far as the growing need? Because we're creating more and more and more, which is great, and then we have to have a place where we put some of the stuff once we're not using it. We need to make sure that we've got an adequate storage facility for that as well. Where, where are we at in that discussion?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I just want to assure all of you on council, I did not pay him to ask that question. Actually, we just had a conversation last week, our team with Sean Wilson and the facility staff. You're exactly right, it is an ongoing conversation. And our ability to use percent for art dollars to acquire additional art, or exhibits, or that sort of thing, is constrained by our storage. It is actively being worked on by the facility staff in conjunction and collaboration with our team, so that we can make sure that not only is there space, but that it's properly and, that the environment is proper, because art, as well as archives, even though they're separate, need to be stored with proper environmental conditions. And that's not an easy, nor is it a cheap problem to solve. And so it's very much part of what Sean Wilson's team is working on and collaborating with us to make sure that the needs of the city's collection and its assets are being met.
Great, thank you. And I encourage you to keep that on our radar as you keep moving forward. It's a, it's a big opportunity for us to do right, and to be thinking about sort of long-term, how we want to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Jennifer, thanks so much for this presentation. And I know recently, we spoke, we had a mural at the Bora Pool that's gone away, a piece of artwork that we were sad to see go. And I just want to thank you and your team for meeting with me and for talking through on how we can look at putting more art and different ways besides just the library.
and different ways besides just the library out in Hillcrest so that the public can have access to in West Boise. I know you and your team have a lot of really good ideas and looking forward to continuing that conversation. So thank you very much for being open and willing to continue the discussions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Corles. We're glad for your interest and engagement. Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Alex Winkler. IT, welcome.
Mayor, Council, my name is Alexandra Winkler, and I'm the Director of the IT Department. Throughout FY '24, our IT team has provided support to departments in the city by updating existing systems, supporting new departmental use cases, while planning for and initiating a modernization effort to evolve our overarching technology portfolio. This year, for example, we've launched public Wi-Fi in three downtown parks and expect to have two more online by fall. This Connect Our Parks project leverages ARPA funds provided to better connect our constituents and keep those that need to be connected safe. We've launched new systems to manage legal cases, as was alluded to by my counterpart. We've launched a new employee time and attendance system. We've launched a new library website. We've also updated our permitting and licensing systems and websites to enable the updated zoning code. In the data space, to enable that data-informed decision-making we've been talking about today, we've invested in a more modern reporting system for department and citywide reporting. And this year, we started by modernizing a much improved manager reporting tool for financial and employee data that we're seeing amazing use. We have about, let's see, 500 different licenses being actively used across the city to access this manager information. To modernize, we've shored up the foundation for our city network, improved our security posture, updated 25% of our city servers, and are making a major push to replace hundreds of outdated employee computers now that we can buy them again post-COVID. We had a number of years where the chips availability did not allow us to buy computers, but we're back in business and our team, team's busy deploying those. Finally, over the past year, we've teamed with departments and vendors to work on a citywide technology approach. This includes consolidating multiple department-based software agreements into a single enterprise agreement, as with Microsoft, Adobe, Cradlepoint, and DocuSign. This not only gets us more value, but it reduces administrative overhead, maintaining, for example, 17 different Adobe contracts. This citywide approach also included a comprehensive software cost analysis, providing a more fine-grained understanding of our software costs to set the stage for better forecasting and cost containment. So let's talk about the landscape. Our citywide technology approach also addresses how we will respond to a changing technology landscape, increased cyber attacks on government agencies, and technology needs of a growing city. Today, the lion's share of our systems are installed on city services, city servers, rather, with data moving between applications inside a relatively closed city system. Many of these systems, however, are aging out as our government IT vendors shift to investing in systems hosted in the cloud by them. This means we have a growing list of required software replacements and the need to implement new systems to protect constituent data, securely move that data, and connect interdependent systems in this new hybrid environment. By hybrid, we mean some hosted here, some hosted there. These new cloud-based systems will shift a higher percentage of cost from what have historically been capital projects to more of a subscription-based model, right? So it, we commonly say capex to opex. This means that IT personnel can devote more of their time enhancing systems, not just updating and testing them. Because when they sit on our own servers, we're constantly upgrading them, not only the servers, but the software. So there are benefits, and it is pricier. Next year, let's see, yep, switched. Next year, we'll continue to support our departments' individual technology needs, many of which you heard about today, such as fire state, fire station alerting, connectivity for new facilities, airport technology strategic planning, finance, a new grant management system for finance, replacing crime lab software, updating an arts and history website, improving police and public work access to their data so that they can continue to make even more data-informed decisions. So that's just a small smattering of that which we know we need to do next year to support department needs. As well, we are diving into several significant citywide initiatives focused on reducing liability, ensuring continuity of operations, and keeping data and systems secure. Examples include moving to the cloud with our permitting and licensing system. You just approved an IBC for that like a couple of weeks ago. Thank you. Replacing our online payment system first, first step is utility billing, modernizing how we manage our city records, of which you've learned a lot about today, and responding to public records requests, and preparing to replace systems we use to do utility billing and also manage our people, assets, and money, read ERP. Finally, we'll implement new enabling systems that support this hybrid architecture. So you see those in the top right. So that's what I have. I stand for questions, and thank you so much for your support.
All right, Alex, you stumped us all, or lunch set in. Thank you very much. Oh, oh, nope, we got one.
I'll just say thank you because when we did, you know, City Council 101, and you came and presented, and we all had lots and lots of questions. And you've just done a really good job over the time, and so many of our directors have, and getting a lot of those questions answered and for us, helping us see the process. So thank you for your presentation today and excited for the future.
Mayor, Councilmember Morales, thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Sarah, welcome, Sarah Borden with HR.
Yes, okay. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks so much for having me. We're almost through. You're almost done. Linda and I are going to end strong here. We got you. We'll keep you going. I'm Sarah Borden. I have the privilege of serving as the Human Resources Director here. And let me walk you through a few things. We would be remiss not to have people. As one of our first slides, we are the people, people. So there are lovely employees doing their hard work. Most everyone has been talking about impacts of 2024 and requests for '25. I'm actually going to take us farther back. This council was very, very kind to our HR department. And in 2023, they gave some major investments to us, changes in our ability to address the city needs. And I want to talk about that because I owe you all a report back to say, here's the impact that really had. Last year was really getting our feet under us and really cranking, so I want to go back a couple of years. So let's walk through it. We were, when we did what we called HR 2.0, we were allowed to add a talent acquisition team. If you remember the Great Resignation, we found ourselves in real trouble. And we were trying to figure out, how can we staff the city the way it needs to be? We also were allowed to stand up a new business partner team, as well as augment security. So starting with talent acquisition, that allowed us to source, recruit, and onboard on purpose more effectively with a team of professionals. One quick note, for example, we were able to go to 22 job fairs just since January. That we just couldn't do. We could not get out in the community and meet them where they were. I got to go to one of the BSU job fairs, and it was one of the funnest things I've done as an employee at the city. The energy the students had, the interest they had in being a part of our city and getting employed at our city, whether that's through an internship or a regular position, was super exciting to see. If you ever want to go, please do. Staff from other departments come and help us. We had fire there. We had police there. Someone from the airport came because they had a number of really cool positions. It's just a really exciting thing to get to do. So that team is just cooking and doing great work with who we can bring on and the quality of employees we're getting. So we're excited about that. The business partners are working with the departments directly and really understanding their strategies. You heard a lot about strategic plans that the departments have built. Well, they're in there too. They go to leadership meetings. They help with the people side of whatever change is going on. You heard a lot about reorgs. Those are really complicated. Take Public Works, and shifting the way they're trying to shift is hard to do. Major people implications, job descriptions, compensation, making sure we're being equitable across the city. So the business partners are working right there with them, and that's been really cool to see. And then our security team, lovely people. You kind of wish you didn't need security, but we certainly do. They've been able to provide de-escalation training. So frontline staff are taught, how do we avoid conflict in the first place? That gives them a lot more confidence just in their daily work. Even if they don't get a conflict, they just know better how to, how to stand on their feet and really do the right work. And also just having a physical presence, having security here for meetings, in the libraries, wherever there could be some concerns that might arise, there are people there to help just calm things down and move things along. So because of your investments, we were able to do this, and we really have had wonderful results. Going to show you a couple of slides that really drive that home. I will tell you, when Alex talks about needing a new ERP, getting the data for these two basic data points was Herculean. So we still do need the new system. I don't want that to go by. But let me show you a couple of things that just kind of reflect the success we've had. So this is a turnover starting in 2019 through 2024. 2019, we're not 10% turnover, started to rise, and then COVID hit, and everyone got nervous. And they said, whoop, we're all going to just hold still for a minute. We're not sure where things are going. Then you see the Great Resignation, that big hump in the middle. We got up to an 18.5% turnover rate unheard of at the city, just never, never happens here. That's when we said, okay, we need to do something different. So we made our investments, people really dug in, and we are now back down to about 12.3. We would love to be back pre-COVID, but I'm guessing, and based on what I'm reading and looking at, this may be where we stay. People are now used to moving more than they used to. We may not have people get in a job and stay forever. We'll certainly keep working on it, but 12% feels a whole lot better than 18. So that's, that's one data point I want to share. And then this was the one that kept me up over night after night. So before COVID, we had about a 9% vacancy rate. It dropped down to 7.5. And when you see these spikes, that's usually at the new fiscal year. So you all will approve positions, and then it pops up, and then we try to get it back down. So you'll see our highest vacancy rate got to 15%. We just could not get the jobs filled. Well, again, I'm thrilled to say we're now at 9.1, so we're actually below where we were pre-COVID. And it's, it has to do with investment. It has to do with all these lovely departments partnering with us to go out and find good people. And this is definitely a citywide effort, and could not be happier to share this slide in particular because this is the one I look at all the time. So that, that's where we've been, I believe. Let me just make sure I've got my slides right. Yeah. There's only one thing that's of significance that we're asking for in this next budget. We know we provide great benefits and strong compensation packages, but we are not currently able to quantify the value of our benefits. And when we're making decisions on, do we focus on the compensation side, the benefit side? It would really help us to know sort of the quantifiable value of the benefits we're providing. We can share that with potential employees. We can share that with our current employees. So that's the ask now, is just for a study to help us quantify the budget, or the benefits that we offer. And I believe that's it. I'll stand for questions.
Sarah, I think, I really appreciate the, the review and overview of the impact that those investments we made in '23 have had. Because you're right, that was a big FTE year for HR. It was so needed. And it's really great to see the data tracking, the impact that those investments and people had.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. And we certainly hoped it would have the impact, and it's great to see that it did. I'm much relieved.
And Sarah's organization is another department in the city that's gone through a reorg as well. And, and so I just, I want to acknowledge that because in addition to deploying these new teams, that you've worked on a structure that reflects the 21st century city and business needs to run the business.
That, that's exactly right, Madam Mayor. And let me just add, there was a little bit of discussion about the Org Effectiveness Team Office. We had to do a lot of process redesign. And that we did sort of, we just sort of figured it out as we went. We had one person on staff who could do that. But I can't, I can't overstate the value of having teams that can, across the city, help us improve our processes, understand our data. We just are doing it in our own little pockets, and that's only so effective. If you took what we did and then expanded that across the city, we would save time, money, effort, staff, all kinds of things. So I'm hopeful we can really be conscious about thinking about that new department because I certainly could see it as a huge benefit.
Madam Mayor, I wish that I had like a really good question for you, and I don't. But I really do think that our folks, not just at the city, but in HR in general across the country are sort of the unsung heroes of the last four years. I can't imagine the amount of HR issues that people have been dealing with, from folks who are already there to folks that are leaving, to folks that are coming in and bringing folks in. And you continue to push, I think, us on City Council to make sure that we are addressing these issues. And I'm glad to see that it's been working. So I appreciate all the hard work, and you did it in the middle of like a remodel downstairs as well. So hopefully, things are starting to even out a little bit. I think that there's still some challenges there with, like you said, people who are sticking around, maybe not quite as long. We have so many great employees at the city who have like 30-year pins. And I do wonder if those will continue to exist. I hope that they do going forward. And I look forward to some of our team-building events we have going forward, just in the next month or so, where we get to put more of those pins on people, and they see the value of staying at the city long-term. I do think that those benefits and trying to quantify those, you know, will have an impact. Because some of those 30-year employees, you know, you can look over the, the course of time that they're at the city, and between their retirement, their dental, their medical, like the amount the city has been able to support and to keep them here. I think that it is quantifiable, and it does have a positive life impact. So again, thank you for all the hard work.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, thank you very much. I will say, it really does feel like we've, we're in a good spot, like we're starting to cruise. There's always room for improvement, but we've gone through a whole bunch, and now we're, we're getting in our stride. It feels really, really good. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Sarah, thank you so much for the presentation. Being new on council, it's, I don't have the history of where it's been and the investments have been made, so it's very beneficial for me. I think the city offers probably some of the best benefit package of any organization, private or public. And if there's some way we could really quantify that and get that out, I think we'll see even more applicants to those positions because it is a lot of really great benefits that we offer. So thanks for your work in making that happen.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corles, yes, that's exactly what we want to do. We got, we have a great story to tell, so we just have to find, continue to find ways to tell it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and last but not least. Oh, I know, but I'm talking about department directors. Welcome. Sorry, Linda, DFA, Department of Finance Administration, Linda Lowry.
Thank you. Thank you much, very much, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. And yes, last but not least, hopefully, our last budget presentation today. So I want to thank you for the investments that you made in Department of Finance and Administration in FY '24 and the impact. Strategic, the strategic investments in our parking maintenance team have led to quicker, more efficient repairs and routine maintenance, reducing parking meter downtime and ensuring a smoother operational flow and collection of revenue. These improvements have not only elevated the quality of our parking services, but have also extended the lifespan of our parking meters, reflecting a more cost-effective use of taxpayer dollars and better service delivery to our residents and visitors. With the ongoing funding of the Grants Management Team, they've been able to continue to support the $37 million in ARPA grant-related activities across the city, including important subaward programs in childcare, small businesses, mental health, and food security. With an eye on long-term improvements in grant administration across the city, they are developing grant policies and procedures, pursuing implementation of grants management software, and working with our cognizant federal agent to implement a negotiated indirect cost rate agreement, which will help cover more of the city's administrative costs related to grants in the future. Investing in the ongoing funding of this team will enable them to continue with those activities, as well as to proactively pursue new grant funding for the city and community. Fiscal year to date, that team has helped secure over $1 million in new federal funds and recently supported the development over $10 million in additional federal funding requests, of which you heard about the Sipra Grant earlier today from Maureen and her team. That's about 7.5 million of that.
And I just want to jump in here because Linda's put together a great team of folks that are working on this, and they're constantly scanning for opportunities. And this is, we're able now with this team to do so much more than the city's ever done in terms of chasing funding to do what the council president mentioned was so important, which is really diversify our portfolio. And we've had pretty good success so far in the grants that we've received. So really appreciate the focus and the work.
Great, thank you. To meet the demands of a growing city, we've also reorged finance. So our reorg process took majority of fiscal year '24. This reorganization will enable us to scale financial services so as the city grows, resources can be allocated to advance community priorities versus administrative functions. It will enable the implementation of best practices, centralizing and standardization of processes for efficiency and reduce manual work and subsequent errors. This new structure is aligned with the functional work areas typically seen in modern technology solutions, thus allowing us to fully leverage technology, the workflows and automation that it will provide. thus allowing us to fully leverage technology, the workflows and automation that it will provide. We are in the middle of Phase 3 of the reorganization, which entails transforming all tasks to new roles. We expect to be done with this work at the calendar year end and then start the work on centralizing and standardizing processes, which is when the real benefits of the reorganization will materialize. So in FY '25, the impacts, the requests that we're making are primarily to advance citywide priorities. We're looking to make advance, or excuse me, looking to make requests for continued graffiti abatement, childcare licensing incentives, and grants management software. Continuing to fund graffiti abatement, the graffiti abatement program in FY '25 represents our commitment to maintaining a clean, welcoming environment. This program's effectiveness in promoting, in properly addressing and removing graffiti is still under evaluation as we have had very limited complaints and abatements so far. Therefore, continuing one-time funding to cover abatement costs in '25, FY '25 will enable us more time to collect data and assess the effectiveness of this new ordinance. In the beginning of calendar year 2022, in conjunction with streamlining the process and reducing the delays to license, the city also began offering licensing incentives to childcare workers, which include waiving licensing fees and covering the costs of CPR and first aid training. Since its inception, the city has waived license fees for almost 3,000 new childcare workers. Childcare facilities continue to struggle with hiring and retaining childcare workers. Continuing to provide these incentives will reduce the burden of licensing and help incentivize individuals to enter the childcare industry, reduce costs for childcare facilities, and help promote, provide childcare services to local families. And lastly, as we commit to proactive pursuit of grant funds and increase our grants portfolio, new grants management software will help the city in its two primary grant-related roles as grantor and grantee. This system will replace Zoom Grants, the city's existing grant system, with a more user-friendly applicant portal for external stakeholders to apply for community-facing grant programs, to submit invoices and to share impact reports. It will also add functionality our existing software doesn't support from a grantee perspective, such as comprehensive lifecycle management, streamlined reporting, internal workflows, and compliance monitoring tools. It will also allow us to centralize and streamline grants management efforts, thus enhancing transparency, effective financial stewardship, and increasing staff capacity to identify and secure new resources of funding that will ultimately benefit our community. A frivolous budget request would support costs through fiscal year '26 until a negotiated indirect cost rate agreement is established and the sort, and as a source of ongoing funding. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the presentation. I'm blown away at the number of childcare licenses that were, that were issued since 2022. I wonder, is that, was that our typical cadence for licensing? Or did we see a spike when those, when those fees were lifted?
That's a really quick question, I don't know the answer to that. I know that that represents a lot of, also unfortunately, turnover in the industry. And then there's a lot of licenses in the summertime for summer programs as well that happen. So, but I can follow up and ask if that's, if the incentives have drove an increase in licenses or not.
Thank you, yeah, I think that would be interesting, the review.
Madam Mayor, I just want to comment on one item for the Zoom Grants. I do appreciate the review for the software. I've used that software personally and it can be a little bit challenging to get around. So I think having a new software will make it easier for our grant applications and to manage that program. So thank you.
That was the hope. The team did an RFP the last six months, or sorry, Request for Information, RFI, and they've gotten a lot of interesting new information on grants, software that's available out there and they're very excited about the prospects.
Linda, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, so that's it for our department directors. I know it's not it, Courtney's coming back up probably to review all the questions being asked, see what we've missed. I want to thank everybody that's been a part of today and those of you that are still here with us. Appreciate all the information provided, the work that went into it, and then the questions and suggestions from council. Courtney, I'll have you wrap this up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm just gonna, this is the fun part of the day where you test me on my note-taking abilities and those of my friends to go through pieces of information you would like us to follow up on. So please let me know if I have something right or wrong or if this spurs you to think of other things that you would like us to return with. There was discussion in the beginning of the day about the need to follow up on the mayor's office and organizational effectiveness. You asked us to bring back past FTE investments by department, so pre-COVID years up till today. I believe there was a mention about the need to follow up on code enforcement, geothermal growth trends and water rights, the water renewal rate increases in the bond forecasts, connection fees for folks primarily in the Southwest on wells for both sewer and water. There were quite a few questions in policing that include staffing, steady growth estimates versus CLA investments, traffic enforcement, how we might deal with that outside of sworn officers, the behavioral response teams, and also response models in regards to technology, sworn officers and staffing. That question was also posed for fire. In addition to sharing mental health best practices and investments we've made in public safety for general employees. Also, there was a request for fires, 10-year strategic plan. And then in PDS, it was pathways, a pathways update, a multi-year outlook, the permit time goals compared to the improvements we've made in the permit times and vacancies in the planning staff. I believe the council president had a request for a more detailed look at the criminal work our legal department is doing. And in Parks and Rec, it was teen opportunities, South or other junior high after-school parks and programming, Liberty Park restrooms. And then there was discussion at the noon meeting about the fund balance for housing, special projects, and federal grants for the savings and reimbursement process associated with supportive housing investments. And then lastly, the question the council pro temp just asked about the patterns in childcare licensing over the last several years. And then more broadly, we can return with kind of how the city set the priorities in this budget to council member Sted's questions. What did we choose to put in the budget and how the city approached that so that you can, you can have a better understanding what to expect in the year after? And with that, I'm open for more items.
Madam Mayor, just drilling down more specifically on the pathways. I feel like we have good information on the pathways. We're appreciative of the presentation that we had a month or two ago on that. I think council would be like, I think we'd like to be more specific with our request in that if there are shovel-ready projects, which I believe there are two, we'd like to explore revenue options to get those funded, either general fund or any levy funds that might be available to complete shovel-ready projects. Also exploring opportunities to complete other associated projects that might be connected with those through parks. So I'd encourage Parks and PDS to work together if there's any opportunities to find ways to kill two birds with one stone. So maybe scoot a little closer and share some ideas.
Madam Mayor, Council President, thank you for that clarification.
Madam Mayor, a couple of things. One, I think that there's been a variety of different questions about FTEs. If you've been in the city for a long time, there are always, council always asks questions about FTEs. And one of the things that the mayor and I, I've heard us both say is that people are programs, we get that. And we understand that if we want to have initiatives, if we want to create change, as council passes things up here, it actually takes staff, not us, to actually enact those things. And so we want to do our best to get those things right. And because we're not involved in daily operations, we don't always know exactly what those positions are. And so we're trying to make sure that we have the best information that we can to make sure that we're supporting all the initiatives that the mayor, the city council, and that you all are working on. So that's why there's these questions about the FTV, FTEs, and making sure that we get those in the right spots. Those are also the things that are going to continue to cost the city money down the road. And we want to make sure that we're investing in those things well because we know that it matters. And I think this came up with a variety of different departments. You can't just keep adding more people to the same manager and expect that manager's scope of work to be the same. And we can't just keep adding more initiatives onto our staff without giving them the resources to do it. So that's, that's one of the reasons why, you know, there have been so many questions and why I think that that information coming back to us would be helpful just so we can make sure that we get that and those sort of reorgs and the understanding of what those reorgs look like. Correct. I think you got everything else that I, that I saw in there. I think with, with police and fire, and I guess I would encourage other departments to be part of the conversation as well, is it's, including IT, is like, how can we use technology? And how can we use different types of positions to greater accomplish our goals? So it's not just saying like, we want you to do something differently. It's saying, we want you to make sure that you're working at your, if we're using police as an example, that the biggest priorities that you have for enforcement. And if we can allow you to focus on that instead of focusing on some of the other things that maybe are taking up too much time with the use of technology or with the use of civilian-level positions, I'm really making sure that we can activate people at their strengths and what the city's biggest needs are. And so I don't know that that's restricted to police and fire, I think that's across the board. How can we make sure that we're using our resources the best that we possibly can? And then the one thing that maybe you said and I just missed, I do think that within all of our programs, we have a gap when it comes to teens. We've got a teen mental health crisis that we're experiencing in Boise. And I think that there's sometimes a need to figure out like, how can we start this new initiative over here? And how can we start this new program over here? I don't know that that's necessarily the answer. I think sometimes the answer is figuring out what is, we're already doing really, really well. How can we do it better? And how can we make sure that when we're building a new park, that we're building this nice, big, beautiful park and that teens are a center focus of what's happening when we build that, when we're doing an art exhibit, when we're doing, choosing which collections we're going to put out there and we're planning an event at the library, figuring out how we can do what we're already doing really, really well and providing that teen lens to it. And I think we've got so many different departments that can be working together on that focus. Again, not doing anything more, not spending more money or more resources, just doing it in a way that maybe provides a focus to a group that's been missing out a little bit. Other than that, I just want to say thank you to all the folks who put in time to present today. Especially a big thanks to all the folks on our finance team who've been working hard with all these conversations, coordinating you all together, coming up here, presenting to us so that we can throw some wrenches and things, coordinating again several more times till we finally get to that good product, good product at the end. But thank you so much for all the work that has gone into this already and now all the additional work that it's going to take to build it up.
Madam Mayor, Courtney, thank you very much for the summary. I think there was just one item that I also wanted to place on that list and that was for the cost of a parking lot near Fire Station 17 off of Coal Road. I think earlier I said Maple Grove. So that we have a place where people can go and park without coming across town to access some natural trails there, walk their dogs and maybe take their bikes also. I also want to reiterate what Mr. Hallie Burton said and thank you to all the directors and for your time and for putting this information together and for educating especially new council members. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, looks like you got almost everything and now we've got it all. So thanks so much, thanks, everybody, for the work that went in today and all the time today, I really appreciate it. We, oh, I guess I got to take a motion.
Madam Mayor, move that we adjourn.
Favor? We are adjourned, thanks, everybody.